Is there, uh, someone in the room recording this?
Yes.
We're on.
Oh, hey, we're on.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and all the ships of sea.
They're being digitally recorded.
Everybody out there in TV land.
Yeah, don't forget to say that. Digitally recorded.
Yes, indeed, our meeting is being digitally recorded and videotaped. Bonnie, would you do us a favor and sign in?
Oh, sure.
Here, right here.
That's agenda.
I just found out I was carrying a passenger. Tick.
Oh.
You got a tick?
Yeah.
Be careful, be careful how you kill them.
Yeah, I know.
You know, we take a piece of Scotch tape, wrap them in the Scotch tape, they're just, they're entombed.
But you know something, I did that and, and it lived for two days, the other one.
Oh, that's animal cruelty.
They don't die.
They don't get out of the Scotch tape either.
No, as long as, well, this one did, I, I just stuck him on his back.
You were what?
Shipping tape.
Shipping tape, yeah.
Um, but if you crush them, and then you, I don't know, eat with those hands or something, you can actually get the, uh, spiral keats from crushed body fluids, yeah.
Wow.
I don't want to give them a pass and throw them outside.
I wouldn't give them a pass. Yeah, give them to me, I'll be glad to crush them.
Anybody got a match?
Hi.
I don't think we should be passing around.
All right.
Thought it was a spider.
You hear a gunshot, you know he killed a tick.
I'd like to say that.
You hear a gunshot, you know he killed a tick.
Yeah, I got bitten there.
So we don't need this.
Yeah, I didn't know if that, that was anything you were interested in.
She had, they weren't interested in discussing.
So, we need to go with a little bit of correspondence, we don't start our hearing until seven o'clock. And, uh, we have one memo from Glenn Eaton at the Executive Director of the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission to the planning boards. And on the attached form, please appoint a member to represent your city or town in the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission. This appointment will begin July one, twenty seventeen, and terminate on June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Representative must be a member of the planning board. Um, do I hear a nomination?
Tom Brecko?
Second, all in favor?
Opposed.
Who's nominated, Tom Brecko?
I nominated myself, but my wife was there.
What'd she do?
He never, he never knows when he's gonna miss a meeting.
Sorry, Tom.
Yeah, we have a note to a gentleman named Brian Bortle from Fleet and Property Maintenance Management. Dear Mr. Bortle, this is going from Lawrence Brandt to Mr. Bortle. Uh, your request to open a maintenance management business office from thirty-six Main Street is being denied as you need a site plan approval by the planning board as required by the Hubbardson zoning bylaws, Article nine, site plan approval. Since your parcel is located in the commercial district, it falls under section four point four C, which is permitted by Wright and Commercial Districts. Please bring the completed enclosed application for site plan approval with the required documents stated in Article nine, along with the required fee in this letter to the next planning board meeting to file for a public hearing. You also need certified, a butters, et cetera, et cetera. So, he has a, a, uh, it's a use granted by Wright in the commercial district, but he does need a site plan to go along with it, so we'll have a, a site plan hearing for that.
What type of business was it?
Property manager, property maintenance and management. Um, we got a note from the Madison Greens Condominium Association. Dear sir, as you may be aware, the developer of our condominium association will be requesting a release of the master plan and any bond money which may be held for the completion of our roadways and association. We would request that when this occurs, the planning board notify us, the trustees, as well as the residents of the community by notifying our prop, excuse me, our property management company, Hodan Property Management, Boston, Mass. We would then plan on residents attending this very important meeting, that we would have far-reaching and long-term effects on our community. We have to look this up, 'cause I'm not sure if we do hold any bond on that road. That's a private road, we're gonna check on that, so, that's where I went out. Yeah, we have an agreement for the, between the town of Hubbardston and the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission. Signed by Glenn Eaton, this must be our annual agreement, however, this is the first time I've ever seen it. So... I think we'll put this on the back burner till we all get a chance to read it, if you wanna pass it around, we'll catch up to that at the next meeting. I don't wanna take the time to read that right now. We'll read that one next week. And that's about it, anybody have any old business we should be looking at for the next couple of minutes?
Um, I have a couple of things.
Oh, good.
Well, you asked me to look into the number of new houses, this is a report I printed out of the permitting software. Right now, in two thousand seventeen, there are three permits that have been processed, and there's more are in process, with Larry reviewing them right now. In two thousand seventeen, we have four certificates of occupancy that was issued, you can have this.
Were those houses built last year or are they this year so far?
Well, the certificates of occupancy that have been issued, the, some of the permits were issued last year and they, they were finished this year.
All right, two on that, sorry.
That's all the building permits, and then I circled the ones that are new homes. The reason why Ben was asking for everybody out there is because there's a limit on the number of new homes, you have a limit under the zoning.
Well, we're not close yet, luckily we're twenty-five away. But plenty more of whom to go.
These two were two public records requests that were requested of the planning board, which we responded to.
Ed Blanchard had requested information on the reclamation plan for the town gravel pit, we have no information on that. And we have a request from Laura Foley for the grandfather clause that allows earth removal operations in an area zone residential and agricultural. I called her and explained, there is none of that, we do not have a grandfathering clause for that either, so we basically fulfill these without any, uh, reports going out, because we have nothing to report on them, neither one is applicable.
Did you wanna make a note about the temporary driveway permit? Um, this was the, I had passed these out before the...
Yeah.
It was approved in the February third, two thousand sixteen minutes.
Yeah, we'll look at that for next week when we, we get it out earlier. We're going to, uh, wait till seven o'clock for the hearing, do you wanna proceed before or after?
I can't.
I would suggest after.
Only two-page document.
What's in the air?
Pardon me?
What's in the air?
I know, that always, that always happens to me when I come in here.
Oh. Share size, I don't know. I offer, is that near man?
No, thanks. Once I start.
I was just gonna say, I don't want a one, I want the bag.
Is there any, uh, comment?
No, I don't think so, I think we're gonna have a date.
Three permits, just leaving us here, huh?
Oh, okay. Okay, I was gonna keep it for you.
I will email.
Okay, that's good. They don't seem to be here tonight.
Yeah, I don't know.
Excuse me, Bonnie, is that your home up on Ragged Hill Road that's collecting the cans for the senior center? Just drop them off there? No?
I've been doing that, I've been picking up on the side of the road, and people have been dropping them off. In fact, I just remember today, and, you know, the eight dollars or something, six, ten, two days ago. People have been very good, like, we've got about three hundred and twenty-five dollars today.
Really?
And that's going to be, we've decided that we're going to buy some, uh, manger seed figures to try and get clients to, to build us a, you know, manger seed, I mean, a manger that can be stable, it can be taken apart.
Out of the cans?
Huh?
Out of the cans?
In fact, I actually have a wood, sorry, Bonnie. But, um, so we've got about, who's over three hundred and twenty-five, I think, this'll make it, I'll just print there.
That would be, uh, for like the town common or something, right?
Yeah, to put on a common at Christmas time, 'cause all we can have to treat, we have a reward. But, I mean, he's the reason for the season, and I really like to see something, yeah.
So, there's no limit on the amount of cans we can bring up? My wife, my wife, we've been saving these things for years, and I, time to go. Looks like we've been partying for years.
Not in the van.
We filled my, my car and his van, I think there was thirteen hundred cans.
Where do you take them?
Ten bottles, we did them all in one, else we would...
Where, where do you take them?
Um, the little liquor store next to the entrance, you, you push them through, oh my god.
Thirteen hundred individual, oh my god, you earned that money.
Most of them will give you the bags, and you fill it up to that line in the bag, and that's how much is, if you're plus or minus, they, they give you this.
Oh, yeah, there is this.
Where's that, yeah, that makes it easy.
Um, talk to any of the big liquor stores, they'll let you do it.
Really? The thing is, people, this, people drink so many oddball beers, craft beers now.
Yeah.
That I have two bags in my car that I don't even know where to take, because I, they, they don't have them, yes, I'm gonna have to try.
I thought they had to take them anyway, I thought they had to take them back anyway.
Well, you only have two distributors now, you have Atlas, 'cause they merged with the other one. And Gerati, who is Anheuser-Busch. Something bev.
I've got an awful lot of, you know, Frog Hollow, Flattire, I mean, it's...
So, for all those out there in TV land that like to drop off your cans and bottles, it's, uh, what number Ragged Road?
One forty-eight.
One forty-eight Ragged Hill Road.
Just leave me room and have to get in and out of my garage.
Yep. Competition for the Boy Scouts. Well, I'll drop them off then.
Yeah, they could do it, the ones that, the ones that, I can figure it out. But they're, but they're hard liquor, I don't know whether they can even handle them or do anything.
Three weeks ago, she came up, we towed her car, towed my van.
With what, cans?
Canned and bottled, they've saved it for over a year.
I, I'll bet I got two years' worth.
Really?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
That pretty much fills up your two-car garage, doesn't it?
That's two weeks' worth, I should say.
I go once a month, and it's usually twenty-five bucks worth. My son-in-law doesn't do it, I says, save them for me.
Well, it works.
I under, I understand your frustration with that, though. When you have three hundred cans, you're like, okay, who's whose?
Did you try taking them over to Tony's? Or Anthony's, Tony, Anthony's in Gardena?
No, I haven't.
He, he sells a lot of different craft beers, yeah.
Anthony's does, uh, Tony's, Anthony's does too.
Where's that, is that the one on?
It's on, um...
City Hall Ave.
Pearson Boulevard?
Pearson.
Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street is...
Right beside Friendly's.
Oh, no, that's Brazos.
That's Brazos.
That's Brazos, Anthony's is...
Anthony's is over near, uh...
Pearson Boulevard.
Staples.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I think the second Thursday is twenty percent off on wine.
Wow.
Really?
The second Thursday of the month, they have some, something, I always drive by and see the sign.
The big sign. Well, they approved the liquor license for Michelle Murch last night.
Deducted, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
That'd be good.
There's, uh, supposed to be craft beer and, uh, homemade wine.
Yep, she's just waiting on her A B C C license, no, it'd be good.
It'd be nice.
Yeah, give her a couple grow, local growth, local wine industry people.
Yes, indeed.
Pretty big turnout for the marijuana law.
I don't know if these are the leftover hippies, or what, what are we dealing with here?
They got their marijuana seeds in their, in their pockets, and they're ready to plant them. Seeds and sticks.
Hey, it's the fiftieth anniversary of the Summer of Love. Yep, nineteen sixty-seven. A good year.
Footnote, you have to grow indoors. Or it's uncovered if it's outdoors.
Out in California, all you see are these, uh, hydroponic supply stores, you know, everybody's growing in their basement. Lights and hoses, and it's all this carbon.
Now's the time to invest.
Well, there's not much of a threshold to get in the business, I don't think it requires much of an investment.
I saw a, I saw an advertisement on Craigslist for someone who's looking for a minimum of ten acres in this area to let them grow their...
They wanna rent the, rent the land?
Yeah, they'll cultivate the land and, uh, be part of the business. I don't know who was sponsoring it, but, you know. You know, who knows, probably somebody in an apartment who was, you know, needs some transplant.
They'll have co-ops. I think you're allowed to grow so many plants per person or something, so they'll have...
Six per person.
They'll have people joining the guys in a form of co-op, and then planting ten acres, you know.
Is there, is there different, um, regulations for growing versus...
Yes, different licenses.
There's five categories, I think, growing, distributing, and...
So you guys are gonna have to come up with, for all, all five of those different types of things, that are really?
Ultimately, you have to deal with all five, I don't know what you have to do to deal with it, but you have to do with it.
We don't know either, that's why we're putting the moratorium in, they, they haven't set up the regulations or the standards or anything.
Right.
And, uh, so we'll go from there.
Well, it's like a hundred and twenty billion dollar business.
Wow.
And that's revenue that everybody could get their hands on.
Or is that the...
That's what they're...
The legal one that they're comparing it to?
No, they're comparing that to the illegal operations.
That's the illegal one? I bet you that would drop, once it becomes legal.
Yeah, supply and demand.
Mm-hmm.
Boom.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be that much.
Well, the price may drop some, but... I think for, for growing is, it's, it's twenty thousand dollars for the permit. Cultivation's twenty thousand dollars for the permit.
Who are you paying, the state?
Yeah.
That, that's your permit cost.
To the state?
Yeah, to, yeah.
To the state, for the license. It, it's like, wowzer.
That's another question, do you pay to the state and to the town?
Yes.
Both?
There's a state...
We're hoping.
There's a state tax.
Big revenue source.
Well, you're, what, two point one seven percent or something like that?
Well, we don't have any customers at this hearing, that's for sure.
We're not sure if there'll be a payment in lieu of taxes.
Right.
Or get a bail, you know.
Senior Center.
We can gift it.
Right?
Any quantity.
Senior Center goes debt-free in six months.
I can see a picture with my phone, unless you have extra copy, that's better.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you. Thank you, is this for me to keep?
Yeah.
Seniors smile all over town, we wonder why.
Initial application is three thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars for recreational marijuana retail license. Fifteen thousand for recreational marijuana manufacturing license. Fifteen thousand for recreational marijuana cultivator license. And ten thousand dollars for recreational marijuana testing facility license. So those are your, those are your five licenses that...
And those are already established?
Those are established.
And those are here in the state?
The, the ones that are established in the state right now are the medical marijuana licenses.
Okay.
So what are those proposals?
And are those proposed?
This is what they're gonna have, but they'd have, and CCC hasn't gone anywhere with it. First, you need to have a commission, they don't have it, it's gonna be pretty much like the Alcohol Commission. Then people are like, sitting there going, ooh, they don't even trust the Alcohol Commission, never mind what these guys are gonna do.
So then where did those figures come from, if they don't have, even have a commission to sign on?
Um... It's from the state. And so they've already put the licensing...
They must be just thinking about it or proposing these...
This is what it will cost, is what they're saying here. How much will it cost to apply for a license?
Well, seeing it's seven o'clock, we'll entertain a motion to, um...
Recede.
Re, thank you, why do I forget that word? To recess the planning board meeting in order to hold a hearing on the temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments. Your motion?
Make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote. I'm gonna read the hearing notice. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Hubbardson Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May thirty-first, at seven PM, in the Slade Building, Seven Main Street, Hubbardson, to hear public comment on a proposed amendment to the Hubbardson zoning bylaws. The proposed amendment would be a temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments. The town intends to adopt the temporary moratorium on the use of land and structures in the town, the non-medical marijuana establishments, so as to allow the town sufficient time to engage in a planning process to address the effects of such structures and uses in the town, and to enact bylaws in a manner consistent with sound land use planning goals and objectives. The complete copy of the proposed amendment may be viewed at town clerk's office during regular business hours. This was posted in two places in town, and also advertised as directed in the Gardena News for the appropriate amount of time. So, I'm gonna continue on by reading the actual moratorium that's being proposed. It's going to be, uh... I've got two articles here, in the warrant, it's listed as Article nineteen. And it's to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Hubbardson zoning bylaws by adding a new Article twenty-one, Temporary Moratorium on Non-Medical Marijuana Establishment, and by amending the table of contents to include same. It reads as follows. Temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments, A, purposes. On November eighth, twenty sixteen, the voters of the Commonwealth approved the law regulating the cultivation, processing, distribution, possession, and use of marijuana for recreational purposes. New General Law, Chapter ninety-four G. Regulation of the use and distribution of marijuana not medically prescribed. The law which allows certain personal use and possession of a marijuana, of marijuana for persons at least twenty-one years of age took effect on December fifteenth, twenty sixteen, and as amended on December thirtieth, twenty sixteen, Chapter three fifty-one of the Acts of twenty sixteen, requires a Cannabis Control Commission to issue regulations regarding the licensing of commercial activities by March fifteenth, twenty eighteen, and to begin accepting applications for licenses by April first, twenty eighteen. The law authorized municipalities to adopt ordinances or bylaws regulating the time, place, and manner of operations of marijuana establishments. Further, it authorizes municipalities to enact bylaws and hold local ballot questions to impose additional limitations regarding the types and number of marijuana establishments to be allowed in the community, and whether to allow for marijuana cafes for the consumption of marijuana and marijuana products on the premises where they are sold. Currently under the zoning bylaw, a non-medical marijuana establishment, hereinafter called non-medical marijuana establishment, as defined in General Law, Chapter ninety-four G, subsection one, is not specifically addressed. Regulations to be promulgated by the Cannabis Control Commission may provide guidance on certain aspects of local regulations of non-medical marijuana establishments. The regulation of non-medical marijuana establishments raises novel and complex legal, planning, and public safety issues. The town needs time to study and consider the regulation of non-medical marijuana establishment and address such issues. Questions and concerns have been raised regarding the timeline for implementation, local control mechanisms, regulation of marijuana products, amount of tax, licensing of non-medical marijuana establishments, and additional matters. The town needs to consider the potential impact of the state regulations on local zoning, and to undertake a planning process to consider amending the zoning bylaw regarding regulation of non-medical marijuana establishments. The town intends to adopt a temporary moratorium on the use of land and structures in the town for non-medical marijuana establishments, so as to follow the towns, to, as to allow the town sufficient time to engage in a planning process to address the effects of such structures and uses in the town, and to enact bylaws in a manner consistent with sound land use planning goals and objectives. B, definitions. As used in this subsection, the following terms shall have the following meaning. Non-medical marijuana establishment. The definition of which is a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of marijuana-related businesses, as defined by General Law, Chapter ninety-four G. Section C, Temporary Moratorium. For the reasons set forth above, and notwithstanding any other provision of the zoning bylaws, to the contrary, the town hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for non-medical marijuana establishments and other uses related to personal use of marijuana. The moratorium shall be in effect through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, or until such time as the town adopts zoning bylaw amendments that regulate non-medical marijuana establishments, whichever occurs earlier. During the moratorium period, the town shall undertake a planning process to consider how the town will address the potential impacts... of non-medical marijuana establishments in the town, and to consider the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations regarding non-medical marijuana establishments, and shall consider amending the zoning bylaw in response to these new issues. This temporary moratorium shall not affect in any way the use of land or structures for registered marijuana dispensaries. So, what we are doing this evening is holding the hearing to he- take testimony on the proposed moratorium. This is a hearing only on the proposed moratorium amendment. It's not on the bylaw itself, because we do not have a bylaw. And it's not on the state law itself. It's basically on the moratorium that the town would like to put into place, so that the questions I just mentioned and other questions can be considered and dealt with in the civic way. So, um, a couple things I'd like to make mention of. As of now, this is not permitted by law. So there is no allowance of this particular marijuana law yet. And it is not allowed under our zoning bylaws as an allowable use. Therefore, it is prohibited. So, the only thing that we would be doing would be developing an amendment to impose a meritorium, moratorium, so that an amendment to either allow or not allow medical, non-medical marijuana establishments could be formulated and crafted over the course of the next year. And that's what this is all about. It's designed to give the town a period of time to develop the bylaw that would consider, if we wanna adopt the bylaw or not, it would give us time to consider zoning, where it would be allowed to be sold, grown, uh, distributed, whatever else is allowed. And it would give us time to decide whether or not we should allow consummation on the premises where it's sold. Obviously, on, to develop regulations on its sale, to decide whether or not it should be taxed, and what type of local control we would have. Having said that, I'll open it up to the board if anybody has a comment or a question from the board, and then we'll open it up to the public for comment.
My only commentary on this is that we cannot, as a board, end the zoning board. You have to be able to zone for it, period. Even though there's no zoning law that mentions, here, here's where you could sell it, we can't say, you know, you can't zone for it, according to the law that they passed.
So you're saying that the law does not allow for it to be prohibited?
You can't, to some extent, yes.
Could you share with us what you're referencing? I mean, does it say something that we could read, or, or is this a recall from your session at the Holy Cross?
It's just a refresh from the Holy Cross session. They continually say within that session that the towns cannot, can't, cannot refuse not to zone for it.
How is it some of the towns have decided to prohibit the sale? Okay, well, that's okay. I mean, it's, it's one of the questions we have to explore.
Like Westboro and the few other towns that did it.
Okay, so we have to explore those questions.
Well. They're very specific on it when you read.
Could I just see the cover of this document?
Well, it may be a situation that we may not be able to prohibit it under zoning, but the town may choose not to allow it. Maybe that's the distinction.
I believe that's what it ended up being with the others.
So, okay.
I mean, some of the things like reasonable safeguards, we don't have any of those bylaws, so all that has to be created. Hence the moratorium.
Right.
Gives all of us time to think about this. At the same time, the CCC, which is the Center for Ca- Cannabis.
Cannabis Commission?
Commission, are gonna put out a set of rules. Or, or basically, it'd be the wording for a bylaw that everyone can adopt.
Anybody else have any other questions on it? Bonnie, you're up.
No, I just, I just had a question. Is there any other town that's further along on this journey than we are? That we could copy their, their laws if we liked them, so we didn't have to reinvent the wheel?
Well, there's, it's possible, but this is the season when, as you know, that all the town meetings are coming along. And most of the towns that I'm aware of are looking to adopt the moratoriums because they're in the same boat.
Oh, okay.
So, we'll know soon if there are any of the bylaws that get adopted over the course of the year. They don't have to wait till next June to, to adopt it. They can adopt it at any time. For instance, if we were able to develop something by the October town meeting, we could put it on the agenda for the October town meeting. Um, that may be a little bit too premature, but right now, I don't know of any that have adopted them, and so we would look for that if we do adopt this moratorium. So that, that's a good point. Um, do you wanna speak to the moratorium issue? Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
And you are?
I am well possessed, you planning board clerk. Um, I just wanted you to clarify, Ben. You said that, or Scott said, that the state law does not allow it to be prohibited by zoning. But then you said the town can, um, not allow it under uses.
Well, right now, it's not allowed.
Right.
Because under our current zoning, unless the use is allowed, it's prohibited.
It's not officially allowed in the zoning, so it's prohibited.
And that's, that's why we needed to either adopt something, or adopt that would allow it, disallow it, or put the moratorium into place.
That's what we use.
But I thought Scott said the state law does not allow it to be prohibited.
Well, that's what they're proposing. They haven't, they haven't, they haven't put it into effect yet either. You know, it, it could be, I'm not sure, but it could end up being in the same kind of category as agriculture and solar development, where you can't overly regulate. You have, you have to allow, but you can't overly regulate, so.
Because the state already passed that it's.
Yes, it's the state law, right?
The voters already voted on it.
But we'll have to find out about that. I mean, it's just gonna be one of those research questions. And I'm sure that by the time, oh, in the next few months, Copeland Page, I'm sure will have a, a set of standards, because they generally do develop standards that we can follow. But when we do that, then we will have another hearing on the adoption of a bylaw that would regulate or prohibit or allow such a activity. But right now, we're just looking to buy some time so we can study all these questions and figure it out. So that's the article that will go to the town on next Tuesday evening for a vote. Anybody else like to make a comment, question? Raise your hand. Tom?
Excuse me, I'm Tom Robinson. Scott has attended a session at Holy Cross College, which was sponsored by the, um, Regional Planning or.
CCC, um, Central Massachusetts.
Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, which was, had a whole, uh, maybe two-hour session on this. And, um, I just would invite all of us and perhaps the public too, to take a look at this document put out by the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, which is the information for voters on the regional marijuana, um, ballot question. The two sixteen state ballot question. It looks about a half an inch thick, and it must have a lot of information. So, you're, you're doing the paper shuffle there, and I don't blame you. It's pretty, uh, hard to find something.
I was trying to find something that read perfectly, and I read it already, and I wanted to read it verbatim.
This is probably good research.
Pertained to the moratorium article, which basically all I really wanna do is listen to testimony on the, the moratorium. Either we vote to, uh, what we need to do is we need to hold a hearing, close the hearing, and then we will send our recommendation to the town at next town, next Tuesday night, town meeting. And the recommendation will either to be adopt the moratorium or not to adopt the moratorium.
And so we'll have a motion and vote on that, whether to or not?
We'll do that. So that's what we're taking testimony on tonight. All the other information's gonna be necessary to consider, but not this evening.
Is there a, uh, public comment period between now and the?
Nope, right here. This is it, yep.
Okay.
Of course, on the floor, people will be able to comment. All right, hearing no more questions or comments or testimony. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing on the temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments.
I'll make such a motion?
Second? All in favor? Opposed? So vote. All right, very well. Hearing is over, and I'll entertain a motion to reconvene the planning board.
I'll make such a motion to reconvene the planning board, regular session?
Second?
Second.
Scott? All in favor? Opposed? So vote. We're back in session. It would be appropriate at this time to move to either accept or reject the proposal for a temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana establishments, which would be part of the rep- report that we will bring back to the town meeting next Tuesday, the sixth.
I'll make such a motion that we accept the temporary moratorium on non-medical marijuana, as written on this motion document, and that this motion be, I guess it has to be read at the, uh, town meeting.
I'm not sure they will read the whole thing.
All right, let's say it's part of the report to the town at the annual town meeting. Sorry to make that so long, Janet.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Very well. Then we'll report back to the town meeting that we endorse the idea of a temporary moratorium. Hi.
Do you have anything for medical marijuana already in town, and nothing to add?
No.
Greenfield, Pittsburgh.
I said nothing on that.
Would that also be part of your future process? Will that also be part of your future process in considering the non-medical? Will you consider the medical as well?
I don't know. I, I hadn't even thought about that. All I, all I know is what we're assigned for is the, the moratorium on the non-medical. I think that the medical falls under a completely different category. You know, because it's regulated by the, not only by the State Health Commission, I'm sure, by the state laws that regulate prescriptions.
With this presentation that I saw as of December second, there were two hundred and four total applications for medical marijuana facilities. Um, seventy-nine were PCRs, and a PCR is a word. I have no idea what it is. But supposedly, there's only supposed to be seventy-five approved applications in the state as of this year.
That's the current number, not the limit.
Well, the limit's seventy-five.
Oh, the state limit is seventy-five?
The thing that I think everybody fears is what's gonna happen is that as time moves on towards them making the decision around recreational marijuana stores or businesses, they're gonna have huge constraints on them. Security, everything, everything, how to get rid of bad stuff and so forth. People would smoke anything. But what happens is that if nobody takes action on it from a town perspective, within the bylaws, what will end up happening, from what I've read, is that your medical marijuana facilities get the first crack at it. My personal feeling is, you're probably gonna see that. They're already in place. They've been a good business practice for the town and so forth. It's a, it's a source of income.
So be it. All righty, let's move right along to the agenda. What do I do with the agenda? Not that it's too hard to memorize, but tonight, we're gonna have Tom Robinson reporting on the investigation. Tom, are you ready?
I am.
All righty, the floor is yours.
Ever be. I think the members of the board know, but some of the public may not know. And so, um, I know about what's going on in the last five months or four months. And, uh, so I'm gonna take an opportunity, uh, to read a little two-page document that describes some of this. And what I'm speaking about is the charges brought against Janet and I, and an investigation that I, I have since learned was only of me, and, um, the outcome of that. A little bit about what happened, and then what we might do going forward. I don't know if everyone knows it, but I've been a resident of this town for forty-five years. I moved into it in nineteen seventy-two. Over these years, I've served numerous volunteer positions, library trustees, and school building committee, uh, when we renovated and made an addition on the school as a chairman of the school building committee. I've worked as a planning board, I've worked on ad hoc housing, and do things around town that no one ever knows about. But, um, on January thirty-first, I made an oral, over-the-counter request for public records at the Board of Health Office. I was in there to try to get information to help respond, uh, make an informed response to a, um, public, uh, to a letter that a person had written to the Board of Health, asking, uh, written to the planning board, and asked some questions about reclamation process. Uh, I made a normal, official, over-the-counter request, and didn't get any Board of Health information files or access to any files from the Board of Health or by their clerk, Christine Bulldog. I thought nothing of this particular event. It was an ask, didn't get any information, and I moved on. I went then to Janet, and we looked through, uh, planning board files to see if some similar information was available. I exhausted that effort and left for the day. This was January thirty-first. Two weeks later, on February fifteenth, I get a registered letter from Dan Galant, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, declaring my guilt. He doesn't say allegations. He says, you did, um, use unauthorized and inappropriate access to Conservation Commission files and Board of Health files. He attaches a report to this, uh, registered letter of an incident, written up like a police report, dated February third. It's written by Christine Bulldog, and, um, it makes various claims about that day. Now, this is two weeks later, and I have not heard a thing about this in those two weeks. So this letter gets me completely by surprise. Christine Bulldog, by the way, is also the Police Department clerk. She's also the Conservation Commission clerk. She's also the Health Department Facilities Inspector. She go out, you know, like a restaurant. She's also a records access officer. On that day, I did not access any files in an unauthorized and inappropriate manner. In fact, even a quick read of Bulldog's own report shows that I did have access, and she gave me, provided me access, to Conservation Commission files that I looked through and returned in perfect condition, or as perfect as I found them. And, uh, that was authorized by the town clerk. And that was authorized by the town clerk. C. Baldock went to the town clerk and asked for permission to let me look at these files. Town clerk said, "Yeah, let him look at them." I looked at them, gave them back to him. That's not unauthorized or inappropriate. That's a, I think, an appropriate way to deal with files. Well, C. Baldock goes on to claim that access was provided to me by Janet, who somehow opened all these Board of Health files with keys. In fact, no Board of Health files were ever produced, provided, seen, or reviewed by me or even touched by me. And the simple reason is that Janet had no such keys. Tom Larson came over to Janet on, on February fifteenth and handed her a letter and demanded the keys and she said, "Sorry, I don't have any such keys." Is that pretty accurate? I can't quote you, but I mean, I wasn't there, but that's what I understand from my review of this situation. So the concept that keys opened these Board of Health files is false. C. Baldock's claim that that happened is false, it's a fiction. Dan Galant's letter went on to define restrictions and those restrictions were for me only. And they defined how in the future I would access town files. Those restrictions were not in accordance with state law. And they were later contradicted by our town attorney in a letter. And it clearly states, that letter clearly states, that all citizens must be treated the same way. And that's what the state law says. You can't make a particular person go through extraordinary steps to get public records. So anyway, reading Dan's Galant letter after, two weeks after the event, no one has spoken to me, no one's ever asked me a question, was very upsetting. Within hours of coming home from the post office with the registered letter, I get visited by a police officer delivering a notice to attend a Board of Selectmen executive session. And this letter states that it relates to this unauthorized access and inappropriate access to files and that I have the right to speak, go to this executive session and speak on my own behalf, the right to record the meeting and the right to have a lawyer present, but the lawyer can't speak. Correctly, they said a representative, not a lawyer. So this meeting finally does take place after some time on February twenty-seventh. And of course, that meeting's on a Hubbard's and YouTube Board of Selectmen meeting for February twenty-seventh. You can watch it. And I thought I'd go to that meeting and tell my side of the story and resolve the situation and all, everything would be, be fine. Well, unknown to me, the town administrator, Rayanne Segal, was working with the town attorney for weeks to figure a way to try to make my life miserable. That's the only way I can say it. That's my opinion, I think that was their goal. On the event of January thirty-first, when I actually went in and made these, this record request, the very next day, February first, Rayanne Segal has contacted the state, Secretary of State, Division of Records. She's contacted the town attorney. She sent an email to, emails to all members of the select board reporting her version of events, even though she wasn't there, had no knowledge, didn't witness anything of the incident, her version of the incident. And Rayanne Segal also contacts the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission, 'cause supposedly, these were the files that were looked at. This is all before Christine Baldock has ever written her report. So there must have been an awful lot of communication between C. Baldock and Christine Baldock and Rayanne Segal. If there was a lot of communication, that communication didn't involve asking Janet or I any questions about this event. And of course, this goes on for a month. So for a month, Rayanne Segal's going back and forth with the town attorney, developing a strategy on how to conduct this executive session of the twenty-seventh. Janet and I request the session to be open. The complainant, C. Baldock, doesn't show up. And the Board of Health requests and the selectmen vote to launch an investigation. And they turn it over to the police. So now, all of a sudden, this is a police investigation. It's pretty unbelievable. I think those kind of features of this saga are meant to try to intimidate me. They couldn't have just anybody investigate this, they have to have a policeman investigate it. It's not a criminal matter, it's administrative matter. Although that was not made clear to me. So this is kind of hanging over our heads, Mary and I. We go to this executive session and Janet and I were denied our right to speak. Clearly, this goal, the goal was to launch an investigation and not seek information for resolution of this, of this concern. This was a public chastising of me and to some extent Janet, without ever asking us a single question. In my opinion, the effort was to cast suspicion on me, intimidate me, and discourage my activity on planning boards and other, other volunteer efforts in town. It seems to me this harassment could be retribution for my past activity to prevent the importation of the Boston contaminated dirt. I spoke out on that at a planning board meeting, excuse me, planning board public hearing, and of course, on the town meeting floor. In addition, it may be retribution for my attending an open public meeting at the Worcester County Courthouse regarding the tax collector situation. A member of the select board, Jeff Williams, thought that my going to that open public meeting, a posted open public meeting in which I attended, I asked the Assistant District Attorney if I could attend the meeting. He invited me in. Was in some way, attending that meeting was in some way an invasion of their privacy. This is, I have this in an email, Jeff is saying, "This person doesn't know privacy." This is an open public meeting. It seems to me that some of the selectmen think that the public's business isn't public. I don't like that. I'm, I'm, I will work to keep the public's business open and transparent. So anyway, this investigation is voted on November, February twenty-seventh and it goes on for months. They talk to Janet, they talk to me, I give them some witnesses' names, they talk to witnesses, they talk to Christine Baldock. I don't know if they ever interviewed Rayanne Segal, but in my opinion, she was behind this effort to a very large extent. I have the KP Law invoices from February and March. I'm trying to get April. And all, it's very, very frequent that she's going, Rayanne Segal's going back and forth to the town attorney to discuss how this executive session would be handled and what you can do to restrict access to files, et cetera, et cetera. So it goes on for months. It results in a police report issued in early May and the Board of Selectmen call an executive session for May fifteenth to discuss it. Janet and I attend and the investigating detectives tells the select board that, and tells us, of course, it's a, it's a meeting that I have a tape recording of, "The complaint can't be substantiated." That's a direct quote from the police officer, who, by the way, I think did a professional job. He also reports that nothing but, quote, "polite interactions" were reported by the witnesses. Probably Christine Baldock would take exception to that, but there are other witnesses that state that. There was apparently a second complaint about which I was never informed. Someone unnamed claimed that I took documents from the offices. The police again, quote, "Found nothing to substantiate either of these complaints or accusations," unquote. The officer, or I should probably call him a sergeant, the sergeant went on to say "The allegations were, quote, absolutely unsubstantiated." So here we are, after a very kind of a public chastising on February seventh, on May fif, February twenty-seventh, on May fifteenth, we get a very quiet, buried the issue. And that's why I'm speaking tonight. I don't think it should be buried. It took months to get to this conclusion that the, that these allegations were absolutely unsubstantiated. These months, February, March, April, and May, were difficult for me and my wife and must also have been difficult for Janet. Janet, my hat's off to you.
Thank you.
Rayanne Segal, Christine Baldock, and the Boards of Selectmen and the Boards of Health and this town attorney all tried to hurt us and in some way they did. But I know that I'm innocent of these charges and will vigorously defend myself and as has Janet defended herself. This situation shouldn't be this way. The town administrator, per the town charter, has both the authority and the sworn duty to investigate these minor administrative concerns that may come up between employees, departments, or boards. I could quote the charter, but I invite you all to read it. She has the authority to investigate and she's responsible for all communications between employees, boards, and departments. She did not do her job. Instead, she sought legal action against me, never informed me of what was going on, never asked Janet or I any questions about the incident. And in fact, up to this day, she still hasn't spoken to me about this incident. This, in my opinion, is a dereliction of duty. When seeking background information about this incident, I sought public records. Rayanne Segal obfuscated my request and hid behind attorney-client privilege. The Board of Health and CONCOM refused to answer my request for information about the keys that supposedly opened all these files. C. Baldock actually filed a complaint against me with the Secretary of State, Division of Open Records, for making the public records request. The Secretary of State told them that they were wrong. I eventually got some of the information I saw. I'll remind you, there were no such keys. The claim made, C. Baldock, the claim made by C. Baldock that access to all these files was obtained by Janet and, or by me, by Janet opening these files with keys, was just false. If Dan Galant had asked a few questions at the beginning of this session, at the beginning of this event, or saga, as I should call it, he would have found this out, he could have been nipped in the bud. Instead, everything was, what's the right word? Pursued, excuse me, pursued or pushed to a, to a conflict rather than to a resolution. C. Baldock also filed an open meeting law complaint against three members of the planning board. That goes to the Attorney General. She didn't file it correctly. She filed it to the Board of Selectmen. You're supposed to file it to the deliberative body that you're complaining about, which was, of course, the planning board in this instance. Rayanne Segal took it upon herself to correct that mistake and direct the complaint to Juven and the planning board in general and offer the services of the town attorney. And of course, the town attorney doesn't represent the planning board, it represents the select board. So that offer was difficult to accept when the planning board in general never gets much access to the town attorney. Well, anyway, in summary, while all these charges were absolutely unsubstantiated, that's a quote from the report, Rayanne Segal should be held accountable for not doing her job. Overall, I think she spent well over eight thousand dollars on town money on legal fees related to the path she took on this erroneous and false complaint. She's wasted police time, employees' time, boards' time, other resources, to say nothing of Janet's time, my time, and my resources. This was not free to me. I did not get the benefit of the town attorney. I did not get to spend taxpayer money. Although, when you look at me another way, I was paying for both lawyers. My tax money paid for the town lawyer and my own money paid for my own lawyer. This is ridiculous. But she spent well over eight thousand dollars and I have the records and I'll have probably more records to come in the future just on legal fees with KP Law. But what I'm really after is transparent government and another goal. Another goal is to never have what happened to me happen to anyone else. If a family provider chose to volunteer for this town activity and publicly, and got publicly accused of false accusations, accusations in the newspaper and so forth, it could affect her whole career, her life, the life of her family. This is cruel. This should never be allowed to happen to anyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. That was quite the summation. It has been a long, very difficult spring. I am glad it is over, I'm glad the absolution was granted and, you know, you're a man of remarkable talent. I'm certainly a very lucky man to have you on the committee with us and we do appreciate it. And good luck from here on in because we hope that you're gonna continue to be a contributing member of the planning board and of our community.
I, I don't give up easily.
Very well said, thank you.
I think the town is lucky to have Tom on the board too, as well as the other planning board members because they investigate and they research and they take their jobs seriously. The planning board is diligent in doing their function.
But Janet, I'm retired. My last paragraph about someone younger than me being a provider of a family.
Could have lost their home.
Yeah, I really have no risk. But imagine being an employee at a company and your boss opens a newspaper and says, "You're accused of stealing files." Well, you're not gonna get that promotion. Your reputation's gonna be smirched. And I don't need the pay that the planning board gives me. I can live without it because it's zero. But Janet and other employees in this town that are threatened by this kind of behavior on the part of Rayanne Segal and others, buying groceries with your money, you're paying your rent with your money. You're gonna get hurt. It's not fair. And I'm just so proud of you because you really were at risk. And I think you spoke truth to power, which is always hard. I think Sergeant Kootcher spoke truth to power. And I'm proud of my wife for sticking with me and helping me with this.
I just wish the whole thing had been resolved with the select board and with the town administrator.
It could have been resolved the same day. If you look at the videotapes, Christine Baldock, on the very day of the event, spends a half an hour in this building. She had ample opportunity to speak to Rayanne. Probably did, but I don't know for sure. And Rayanne had ample opportunity to walk the hundred feet over to you, Janet, and ask you a few questions. She had ample opportunity to call me up. None of those kind of activities took place. What she did was call the town attorney. "How can we deal with Tom?" as she says in an email. This is bad behavior, bad management. Just unacceptable to me. If I was a manager, I'd have been a manager in a company and someone did this. They would be looking for another job.
I just find it appalling how much money has been spent on this.
That's not the end of it. I gotta get April and May.
I know.
It's a thousand dollars every time the lawyer comes to this table. And for what? What, what came out of this?
Something that could have been done internally.
Very upsetting, but I really, we really need to work to protect others. It's not about me, it's others, the next guy in line. This can't be the way things are run. And the select board needs to review themselves as well. Dan Galant had the same opportunity to call me. Nothing, never heard from him. Nothing, never heard from him.
Well, let's hope this disturbing chapter's at an end. I, I think we need to get back to business. I know you need to sit back and relax a little bit now that you've been...
Well, I appreciate very much the planning board's support.
Freed from everything and...
I mean, you guys have been great for me. You've, uh, offered me, uh, moral support, in some cases, suggestions and, and guidance, and it's greatly appreciated.
Well, it's an interesting issue that has never been questioned by any member of the planning board, because none of us ever suspected that the allegations were true, certainly not of you nor of any other member of the planning board. You know, we, we do have a very hard but very diligent job, and I think we, uh, I think we earn our pay, as you said, but we do it the right way.
Yes. We're, uh...
We're fair, we're trying to be as honest as we can, and everybody that comes to this table gets the, the same opportunity and, um, chances as everybody else does. We don't take any sides. But good luck, Tom, I hope this is over and let's, uh, move on and congratulations. Congratulations, Janet, I'm glad you're...
Yeah, this is, this is a little bit unsatisfying. You know, the public hanging was back in Feppenberg, and I was found innocent and mad. It's a little disappointing that we found innocent right after the public hanging, but, uh...
Oops.
Oh, yes, oops.
It's like a far side cut.
Not even an oops.
Never mind.
Oh, yeah, and, and there has been no oops.
Nobody said oops.
Yeah, nobody said oops, nobody said, "Oops, sorry." And nobody said anything. In fact, they're still leaving it kind of fuzzy. And that's why I'm quoting the police, uh, the, uh, the Sergeant Kootchers, the detective on this. I have the tape recording, if anybody wants to listen to it, but, um, I also have learned an awful lot about how town business should be conducted. And I have tremendous respect for the laws. The laws are good, if they're followed. And, uh, open meeting laws, public records laws, conflict of interest laws, ethics violations laws, these are, these are tools by which ordinary citizens can affect their government. It's pretty hard to fight the city hall, but it can be done.
Well, very well, thank you. That concludes the agenda. Anybody else have any other business we can consider this evening? I'll entertain the big one.
I'll go to a jury, or I, uh, I'll make a motion to a jury.
Is there a second?
A second, uh...
All in favor, opposed, so voted? And once again...